Okay, well, yes, me then, all right. Welcome to the March 11th, 2019 meeting of the Town Niskuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission. Mr. Twidge, please call the roll.
Mr. Scraby Tennis.
Here.
Mr. Com.
Here.
Ms. McPartlin.
Here.
Ms. Shenfield.
Here.
Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Mr. Laflambeau.
Here.
Chairman Walsh.
Here. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes from the February 25th, 2019 meeting, which were included in your packet. Kevin motion to approve minutes.
So moved.
So moved.
And second by, motion by Mr. McPartlin, and second by Mr. Darpino. Any comments or changes to the minutes?
Chairman Walsh, we had a request from the applicant that submitted the petition last week, that the petition be made part of the minutes. I've never seen that happen. Rob, do you have a thought on whether or not we could formally include the petition into the minutes?
It's part of the packet. How long is it?
I think it's just a page. Is it just a page?
Yeah, then, yeah, no objection. That can be distributed, that it was received at the meeting.
And actually put it in the minutes for the record?
Yeah, fine, yep.
Okay.
All right, do we want to modify these minutes, or do you want to wait till next time?
Modify these ones with the petition.
Okay, all right, all right, so I guess I'll propose that we modify the, these minutes to also include the petition that was submitted at the last meeting, and I believe that was regarding the OD Heck property?
Uh huh, yeah.
Right, okay. All right, is, maybe you'll show hands, everybody okay with modifying the minutes?
I'm going to abstain because I was not present at the last meeting.
All right, all right, any other changes or corrections to the minutes as modified? I have none. Okay, seeing no changes, all those in favor approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none opposed and one abstention, okay. Thank you, everybody. And tonight, we do have a public hearing, public hearing on site plan review for J-Dog Junk Removal and Hauling Distribution Facility at 398 Anthony Street. So, Mr. Twidge, please read the notice.
Notice is hereby given pursuant to the zoning ordinance of the Town of Niskuna, New York, the applicable provisions of the town law of the state of New York. Public hearing will be held by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town Niskuna in the Town Board Meeting Room at 1 Niskuna Circle on the 11th day of March 2019 at 7:00 PM to consider an application from Business Operational Success Systems for a site plan review at 398 Anthony Street, as shown on a map entitled Lot Line Adjustment Between Lands of 398 Anthony Street LLC and Alquavista Realty LTD by CT Mail Associates relative to the following. For change in tendency to a J-Dog Junk Removal and Hauling Distribution Facility at 398 Anthony Street. Project site is approximately 1.60 acres. The property is located in the IG General Industrial Zoning District. A copy of their proposed map and site plan will be available for inspection at the Town Clerk's Office, in the Planning Department, in the Town, in the Niskuna Town Office Building, and at the public hearing. All parties in interest and citizens will be given an opportunity to be heard at the Planning Board at the public hearing to be held as aforementioned. By order of the Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town Niskuna, New York, Kevin Walsh, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll start out, we have the applicant here, is going to give up, and please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and give us just kind of a brief overview of the project for the public.
Sure. Good evening. My name's Greg Agman. We're located at 398 Anthony Street, Schenectady, New York, and I am the president of J-Dog Junk Removal and Hauling. J-Dog Junk Removal and Hauling is a, is a junk removal business, very similar to 1-800-GOT-JUNK or Junk King, along those lines. One of the differences is that we are a national franchise that is only sold to military veterans and/or their family members. So we are a business by veterans for veterans. Our business is all about doing junk removal and providing that service to the public, but doing it the military way. We do it with precision, we show up on time, we're in uniform, we respect the clients and the customers' property, and then we, we exercise responsibility with what we do with the stuff once we collect it. We're one of the few, if not the only, national franchise junk removal company that actually sorts through those things that, that we collect, and we recycle, repurpose, and reuse everything possible. Our goal is to, is to keep 70% of what we collect out of landfills by redistributing it where it goes. What does that mean? Well, that means that, you know, we recycle metal, we recycle tires, we recycle everything that's cardboard, glass, plastics, everything that's recyclable. We repurpose everything we possibly can, which means that we donate to anything that's good and shouldn't go to the landfill, that's not actually junk, but someone else doesn't want it anymore. We actually donate to veteran charities and many charities throughout the area. We donate to all the veteran charities in the area. If there's anything in my warehouse that the veteran needs, they can come and get it anytime, free of charge. What we don't do in our, in our business is we don't handle hazardous material of any kind, we don't store any, anything at, at the facility longer than 72 hours. Our whole idea is to move stuff through there, get it to the vendors, get it to the places where we can donate it, and, and basically, you know, just move the stuff through. We don't hazard, handle any hazardous material, we don't handle liquids, we're not allowed to by law, the franchisor or myself, we're not licensed to do that. And we, and so what we do is we train our guys to load the trucks in the reverse order in which we, in which we donate, if you will, or, or repurpose. So for instance, when they come into the, when they roll into the yard, everything that's in the truck will come off the truck that's staying there, like the tires will come, will be on last, the metals will, will, will come off next, the resell, or the, or, I'm sorry, the recycle, the reuse will be, will come off next, and then whatever is junk, which was, which is going to see a landfill or transfer station stays on the truck. And then, and then when we have the trucks full, we, we take them away to the landfill into the recycle, the, not recycle, the landfills or the transfer stations. So we do a lot, we do a lot with the community, a good portion of what we collect, we will donate, again, veteran charities, we work with the Habitat for Humanity here in Schenectady, we work with the Veterans Miracle Center in Albany, we work with the VBC, we work with the Veterans Housing Coalition. Since we've been in business, we have worked with the VA, and we have actually outfitted four veterans, I, I, I think I said two last time I was here, but I actually meant corrected, it's four, four veteran apartments through their homeless program. So they take a homeless vet, and they're going to give them a temporary housing, we've actually outfitted and furnished four of their apartments. So that's, that's what we do, we're, again, we're a junk, junk removal company that does it the military way, and we do it the responsible way.
Okay, and just for the record, the hours of operation?
The hours of, we, we start about 8:00 in the morning, we're done by 5, 6:00 in the evening, Monday through Saturday. Saturday's usually a half day because the dumps and transfer stations close early.
Okay.
But we, we run a full day.
All right, thank you, Mr. Agman. Well, listen what the public has to say. So this is the public hearing for 398 Anthony Street for J-Dog Junk Removal and Hauling Distribution Facility, at the end of Anthony Street on the right there. So anyone wishing to be heard for the public hearing regarding this matter, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, we'll listen what you have to say. So anyone for the public hearing? No? Okay, seeing none for the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing, thank you. Move on to privilege of the floor, anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in the Town of Niskuna, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we're glad to hear what you have to say. Privilege of the floor. Hello.
My name is Adam Ruder. I'm, I live at 2505 McGovern Drive, and I'm here just to speak about the matter that was at the, up at, presented at the last planning board meeting at about 1380, 1380 Van Antwerp Road. This is in our neighborhood, and a number of my fellow, fellow residents in the neighborhood have, have come tonight as well. And when we heard about this, we were a bit disturbed. We are aware of the subdivision of the original property that has already taken place, and the three houses that have already been built there. And our feeling is that adding another subdivision of that property and putting in two more houses would really make the neighborhood a, quite a different spot. That plot in particular is a real touchstone of the neighborhood, you know, that beautiful house at the end of the, in between McGovern and Hilltop Roads, has been there for ages and ages, and, and is, it really kind of serves as the entrance to the neighborhood. With the current additional hazard that have already been built, for the first time, you can really see through between the two streets. This, I think, would make it even more visible between the two streets and, and turn, turn that area from a densely wooded area that it had been into a much more open and very different feel. We're also concerned about water and flooding issues, you know, the water runoff has, has been increased since those three new houses have gone in, and I would expect that that is going to continue going forward if, if there are two more houses built there. And this is especially concerning with the expected increases in extreme weather and, and flooding events that, that we've seen over the last few years, and we expect could potentially continue with climate change. So I just wanted to come, having heard about the, the proposal at the last meeting, to express our concern about the potential subdivision of that addition, of that lot a second time, and, and urge you to consider, consider alternatives to that.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Charles Petrowski. Excuse me, I'm at 1336 Stanley Lane, the house that does not receive the Schenectady Gazette on a regular basis, they seem to miss us at that triangle there, but my neighbor gets my paper every morning, so that's great. J-Dog, you guys are awesome, thank you very much, you've done work for us, appreciate that. I do want to speak on the 1380 Van Antwerp subdivision as well. I think there's three very cogent points that you all should be aware of. First is the character of the neighborhood. You might say, well, that's kind of a mixed, mixed mash of 2000s, 1960s, and an 1820. But strangely enough, that patchwork quilt is the character of that neighborhood. What's happening with these subdivisions that we see at the top of the hill there is the compression, the cramming, and the stuffing of housing into very small lots. At the gateway, as Adam said, at the gateway of our, of our patchwork neighborhood that we love so much. What is troublesome and fearful is that, is this could become a pattern, more cramming, more stuffing, more trying to fit stuff in, in a place that was, some could argue, already overdeveloped in 1960. So we are worried about that character of our neighborhood. The second piece is, is environmental impact. Clearly, the, the homes that have been added in that area have deforested the community, and the removal of trees, the removal of the trees causes the removal of critters that we like to have around, et cetera, you know, that domino effect. But also, my neighbors have also expressed great concern about the water. You've heard this from when we had the Van Antwerp fault town issue. I don't have any specific experience with that, we're at the bottom of that hill, we do get a lot of water runoff, but it seems to go away, but apparently, a lot of that water is now staying up there. And again, you get rid of the trees, you get rid of the dirt, and you put in driveways and homes, the water is still coming down, it's got to find a place to go, gravity does those things. Finally, the financial impact. If we cram and stuff more houses at the top of that hill, right off of Van Antwerp, if we allow the trees to be, you know, ripped out, if we allow water just to go wherever it wants to go, especially not other people's houses, it's going to have a financial impact on that neighborhood. And by financial impact, lowering housing values. I know Niskuna is a desirable community, we all moved here, and we, we appreciate it, but with the cramming, the stuffing, the getting rid of the trees, we could very easily turn ourselves into yet another central New York undesirable or unwanted or uninteresting place. We love our patchwork neighborhood, we love the 19, we love the 1820s, the 1960s, and the 2000s, and we just want to preserve that Patrick quilt and the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for privilege of the floor?
So intense. Sorry. Marine Saban, 2455 Brookshire Drive. You know, as you all know, I've lived here a long time and has seen Niskuna develop into a little bit more than perhaps what we expected as to the stuffing, I love that word of housing. I think the big thing on my mind right now is the OD Heck property, and obviously, we have an ongoing discussion and forever until something happens, so I assume it's still an open discussion on what you're looking at for possible future, which I think is ridiculous because the planning and zoning board have every right to tell a developer, no, we don't do this, but if you do that, we have variances, we have all kinds of, and we've done that. We have taken people that have wanted, such as the shopping center, I think we called it Mansion Square, and they came in for three or four different adjustments on their original plan, and unfortunately, what was the original plan for that shopping center, which might have been very attractive and productive, is a mess. And I'm not blaming the planning board, but I'm just saying that we do make a lot of accommodations for developers. So the first thing that I think we should decide on is do we have 32 acres or 47 acres? There was a letter to the editor that described this parcel and said nothing about what the state, I mean, we're, we're really in a blind area here. I don't think it makes any difference what you zone it, because that zone's going to be broken, as so many of our zones are. Oh, I look at the, the Instant Care Place on Union Street, I mean, the 14 variances to put that place there, that is a crime. That building sits practically on the sidewalk. And the other thing is, when, when you're discussing the Architectural Review Board, I hope that they make that dented curb really in more than just the entrance into, you know, one, one entrance way, because you have to walk around, and if you park near another entrance, there is no declining curbstone there. So people that may have, no, there's not, now you can look at it, because I had to take someone there for a nosebleed. We had to park over here, then walk around to the front on Union Street, and we had to park there because that's where the, the decline was in the curbing. Now, I'm getting off track here, but I'm just saying that have we done anything with that Architectural Review Board? Do you have one in progress? Do you have people that look over these plans to see if it does fit into our, our zoning and what we have currently with our comprehensive plan? I, I honestly think we're too darn generous to some of our developers. Not that we don't want to expand, but taking time up now for OD Heck, to me, is not taking care of other things that I think the planning board should be doing. Number one, because we have state and county roads, did you have any input as to the roundabout going on from the, I believe it's River Road and Rosendale Road? Did we have, did you have any input? Did you have any architectural, not architectural, archaeological input? You know, that is old, old Indian country. How do we know that there aren't artifacts down there? Have we, has the state come in to do any of the exploration down there? Did we have a representative working with the county and the state on that particular, as they claim, traffic hazard, which I claim is maybe an hour and a half a day that we're spending billions of dollars on? Now, the other point that I'd like to know something about is not street and fault town road. These are not Niskuna streets, but it's the heart of Niskuna. Who sits on that board telling us what we want on the traffic, or how we'd like that to be changed or advanced? Anytime you build a bigger road, you get more traffic. I had, unfortunately, someone tell me, they're talking about a, a roundabout there. I, I was shocked. That would be terrible. Who's, who is our authority on when state and county deal with problems in Niskuna? Does anybody have anything to say about those plans?
Yeah.
You?
Yeah, they come through the planning office.
Do they come?
Engineering gets involved, yes, we do.
But it never mentions that. It talks about the state, the funding, the county. We live here, we're going to be impacted if we don't have some con, good, good concentration of being concerned about the people that live here. Now, I think I've covered a few things. I know the public hearing is over, but this J-Dog drunk thing, or drug junk removal, sounds like a good idea, but don't they do the same thing that our recycling does? I mean, is there going to be a fee to take your things there, or will they?
It's a private business.
Do you have any business, knowledge of how they're going to operate? Do they come to your house, or do you go there? Is there traffic problems that are going to occur on Anthony?
It's a typical junk removal, there's other, you know, businesses out there similar, but yes, they'll go to your house, they'll come probably give you an estimate.
I see, I see. It is not an open, you know, like our transfer section.
No, no, it's not.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
I will, I would like to get some answers on who's representing us in these very major things that are going to be coming up soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Privilege of the floor?
Hi, good evening. My name is Nick Keyes, and I reside at 126 The Widd Avenue in Schenectady. I would like to briefly discuss the issue of zoning change application at 500 Balltown Road, also known as the OD Heck Site. Specifically, I'd like to address the neighborhood mixed use NU, NMU zoning. First off, I would like to commend the planning board members for realizing the importance of getting the neighborhood mixed use zoning definition right, rather than to get it done fast. Most likely, the neighborhood mixed use zoning will, will be not just at the OD Heck property, but also within the Town of Niskuna at other property sites. There was a presentation last month, and again last week, at the Town Board Meeting, comparing the new neighborhood mixed use NU, NMU zoning to two mixed use districts. One comparison was at the Ellsworth Commons in Malta, and the other at the Village of New Loudon in Latham. Although my wife and I plan to visit the Malta site, we did get a chance to visit the Latham site. We spent an afternoon talking with the salesmen for the townhouses and walk in the area, as well as eating at the Burger 21 Restaurant. Our impression is that it's not a walkable community. With townhouses selling for $500,000 to $700,000 range, it's not affordable. Taxes are $12,000 to $15,000 a year, and HOA fees are $3,000 a year. The $3,000 HOA fee pays for snow removal, lawn mowing, and trash removal. There are no clubhouse or community center, and the townhouses are clustered in. The open space to, to speak of is a patch of grass in the middle of two one-year-old trees. Eventually, the trees will grow after 20 years to prevent, to provide a barrier so you don't have to see the other townhouses out the windows. The shading is 10 to 12-foot solid vinyl fencing. After five years of this development site, they're only 20% developed. Some of the retail stores were vacant. One particular one was a fitness center that moved out because the rent increased too much. The day we went was nice weather with a temperature close to 50 degrees. We didn't see anyone walking at all. We did see a lot of cars driving from, from Route 9 into the Burger 21 Restaurant. If you want to consider the Malta and Latham sites comparable, I encourage you to drive them, drive to them, park your car, and see firsthand how walkable these communities actually are. You will find, as we did at the Latham site, that they aren't walkable and certainly not easily wheelchair accessible. Too much, too much better comparable sites are J Street in Schenectady, which I saw in the meeting minutes, Mr. Pino saw, and Church Street Market in Burlington, Vermont. I encourage you to walk J Street, and if you haven't made it to Church Street in Burlington, please Google it and read the Recapedia article on it. Since the last time I spoke, I did some research on mixed use zoning. I looked at many zoning codes in addition to the ones in your planning board minutes. The one thing I came away with is that in order to create a walkable community, you need to control outside traffic. Both J Street and Church Street have a no-car walkway. You can only walk or bicycle in the walkway. Storefronts only face towards the walkway. Both J Street and Church Street used to have a road, and they made the street into a pedestrian walkway mall. And it's wide enough to have entertainment and other street vendors in the pedestrian area. This is what makes it work. They also control the size of retail space. To that end, I have a few ideas to tighten your current mixed use zoning code, which I'll be sharing with Mr. Tweedy after I'm done. Require a minimum of 30-foot wide pedestrian bicycle-only walkway with storefronts facing the walkway. This provides a gathering space. Put a maximum limit on a number of square foot that each retail space can have. This stops larger stores from moving in. Put a maximum seating capacity on restaurants and other entertainment venues. This limits how large retail can become. Have a restriction on drive-throughs. No drive-throughs or drive-in facilities for any of these stores. This eliminates passing cars and additional traffic. Limit the hours of business operations from 6:00 AM to midnight on a daily basis. This eliminates 24-hour stores. Specifically define open space so there's no wiggle room as to what it means. Require existing old growth trees be kept in the open space and require bicycle racks. And I believe you already have this, but require maximum building height of 35 feet. Most successful mixed use zoning uses a list of permitted use, conditional use, and non-permitted use. If you want to create a walkable and interactive community, then encourage community retail space so you can have a farmer's market at various times of the year. Also, the following should not be permitted in a mixed use district. No gas stations, no bank drive-throughs, no fast food or restaurant drive-throughs or drive-ins, no hotels, no apartments, have owner occupied only. No funeral homes, no cemeteries, no hospitals, no private clubs, no adult stores, that's sexually oriented business establishments, no car repair or, or body shops, no animal shelter or boarding camp kennels, no storage warehouses, no vehicle service sales or repairs, no vehicle part or supply, no vehicle body and paint finishing shops, no driving schools, no bulk sale stores, no manufacture and production, no bed and breakfasts, no funeral mortuary services, no consumer material drop-off stations, no indoor/outdoor gun clubs, no equipment or material storage outdoors, no animal husbandry, and no heritocultural nursery. The idea is to limit the, the amount of cars and the amount of traffic. The goal is for, to create a mixed use, and most, most municipalities, when they were dealing with mixed use, it was basically an urban area that they, they created mixed use because of urban blight. But most mixed use are form-based zoning, it's not Euclidean zoning as it is. So you're trying to fit a mixed use, which is form-based, into your Euclidean zoning code. And Euclidean is, is not, like Euclidean geometry, what Euclidean is, is the Supreme Court Euclid First in Ohio that gave municipalities a right to zone in the 30s, 1930s. The goal should be that codes and regulations are easy to read for citizens and more predictable. Whatever list that is created should be specific enough so any builder knows exactly what is permitted and what is not. I can understand that you don't want to overly, be overly restricted, but you also don't want to make a carte blanche, anything-go zoning district. don't want to make a carte blanche, anything-go zoning district. Lastly, I believe you should work with the state to forever protect the ODHX wetlands by creating a land conservation LC district. Along with the ball field, it can be a passive nature preserve park. This takes the wetlands completely off the table as to the question, is the wetlands open space? Is it green space? Or anything in between? I'm sure if Niskiuna expressed an interest in the wetlands for a passive park, the state would be accommodative in not selling that portion to a developer. It wouldn't matter how long it would take to convey the deed for the wetlands, as long as you have the commitment from the state. Lastly, as I've said before, I'm certainly not against any municipality increasing its tax base, as long as it's done in a thoughtful and responsible way. However, this mixed-use district needs to be better defined so that it isn't in quote, "anything-go" district. Eliminate our cars and traffic is what we need. Let's do it right, so any developer can't manipulate the neighborhood mixed-use NMU zoning to have businesses that were never intended to be in a residential small retail district. I'm willing to volunteer to be on any committee to assist in the furtherance of that goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give this to Mr. Tweedy to share with you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Lisa Kiesa. I live at 126 The Wood Avenue in Schenectady, right near Balltown Road, literally across the street from Niskiuna Town Line. One of my immediate concerns is sidewalks. People are trying to walk from the neighborhoods into the shops and different businesses, and we really need some kind of, not only new crosswalk, we need the traffic modified. It's a 35 mile an hour zone between Council Road and State Street, but what happens is people end up going 45 or 50 even. I think at least one side of the street should have a wide sidewalk. Doesn't necessarily have to be near the wetlands, it could be on the other side. And then have some kind of a traffic device and a crosswalk in between where the Stewart's is and the Hannaford, and, and the other light, which is very far down, near where the Price Trapper is. I've seen some of my neighbors trying to negotiate that, and it's very dangerous. And there have already been some traffic accidents there, and God forbid, there was a pedestrian, a bicyclist. So that's a concern. Maybe that's something that can be done. I know these other things are down the road, but maybe we can get that taken care of to make it a walkable neighborhood already. And again, I have a concern with the wetlands, but you know, I'm just going to restate that, that we keep that there because it's important, especially since we lost all the old-growth trees over at Mansion Square. And I guess that's about it. I would like to see sidewalks. I don't know how soon that could be, you know, planned, or what would take, but that would be a nice thing for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, privilege of the floor?
Good evening.
Hello.
I have a couple items I'd like to address. I'd like to.
Share with their name.
Of course.
Sorry. Tom Hodgkins, Rosendale Road.
I'd like to support the business of J-Dog. Sounds like a good cycling business. Support that. You know what I didn't speak of at the public hearing? I do have a concern about electronics, but that's more of a societal issue about what do we do with all these post-consumer electronics, a lot of hazardous metals. It's not really anything one individual business should address differently, but I guess as a society, we need to start thinking about these things because it has a lot of, a lot of problems in post-consumer electronics. Just made me think of this.
I'd like to stand with Daryl Bray and his fellow neighbors here who oppose the subdivision. This was a place that I would ride my bug past all the time when I was a kid going to go to school. And it's a nice wooded section, and it's, it's a house that stands out from the other houses that were built in the 70s around it, because it is much older. And I don't know how old that house is on the corner, but that's, you know, it's a historic lot. And once you start moving buildings around, you change a proportion of the original intention for that lot. And then you build new houses, and that really kind of, really undermines the historic character of that end lot. So, so I'm opposed to that. I was looking at the environmental impact statement, and I had some questions about that. They mentioned that it wouldn't change the community character. I think it clearly does, because it's really altering, I don't know, again, what year that house is built, but it's altering that historic nature. Clearly, the architecture is very different, and the layout is very different than the rest of the neighborhood that was at a much later date. And then there was, they said, they said there was no significant impact on traffic, which on side streets, adding in a couple more houses, you're going to have a lot more cars compared to the current traffic on the side streets. I didn't do the math, but I'm sure it would be a significant impact for that street. I don't know how significant is, significant as far as the physical significance, but I don't know how it's defined in, in this law. So, but I think, I had a question about how that was presented on the environmental impact statement. And then, of course, war dispersal, I think one of the issues, and I think people have mentioned that as well. So that's other issues. The ODH campus, a freeze is necessary, because really, there's, there's too many unknowns at this point. And things do move fast at the state. There are instances where things are put into the budget at the last minute. Just with the 30-day amendments, there was, the governor proposed to unload a few properties that the state owned, just in the 30 days. So, and then things always develop in the last couple of weeks. Things are receipts coming a little bit lower than expected. We're already like three, well, that's, updated financial plan is like, we're about 2.5 below. So we come in a little bit worse, then we're going to say, well, we should offload some of these, more of these projects, off more of these properties. So things can move fast. So that's why I think we really need to just put a freeze on it until we get some answers. I think there's a lot of unknowns that we haven't addressed. For one thing, the financial, I'm sorry, the comprehensive plan. It mentions the ODH campus, and it says, tell me, consider pursuing grants that would have an agency perform a study on possible adaptive uses and budgetary implications for modifying the campus. And I don't, I haven't seen any report that has been done in that nature. I think that's an outstanding suggestion, and I think we should do it. And I think that's one of those unknowns that, that we haven't addressed yet. And I don't think, I don't think we need to make this decision now. We just put a freeze on it, get the answers that we need. We still don't know where ESD, Empire State Development is at. They have been at the campus before, they have, I'm sure they have a file on the campus evaluating the potential. I'm sure they have an evaluation. Where is their paper to the town stating their position? Stating their evaluation of that site? I, I haven't seen that. Same thing with Metroplex. Metroplex has been at that site, involved with the evaluation of future redevelopment or reuse of that site in the past, and they haven't been part of this discussion. Where is their paper evaluating the potential for that site? We haven't seen that. So until we sort of get official opinions presented to the town, we get an understanding of who the architects were for that property, what sort of significance that architectural campus has in the larger context of architectural heritage, so we understand the prior interactions of the community with that campus over time, and maybe try to build off of some of those things. I think there's a lot of unknowns right now, and I don't think there's any reason why we need to be moving forward without answering some of those questions. And the other question you always ask is, you know, cué bueno? Who's going to benefit by moving forward the mixed-use right away without answering these questions? I don't know. But I think we need to answer those questions first, because we don't know who's going to benefit without answering them and moving forward with a mixed-use. So I think there's just too many unknowns. Put a freeze on it. Let's, let's just do a very deliberate process, set up a, as I talked about last time, a deliberative community, community that has a lot of people engaged, a lot of different perspectives, just really kind of fact-finding, evaluating, brainstorming, very, bringing all their creativity to the table, and really try to bring everything, figure out what the goals are for this site. And I, I don't think we've done all that yet. So I think we need to ask more questions, find more answers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Privilege of the floor? No? Okay, seeing no one else, so we'll close privilege of the floor, move on the agenda. We have no unfinished business tonight, and we have no new business. So we'll move right to the discussion item. One discussion item we have tonight's the site plan review of J-Dog Junk Removal. As you know, we just had the public hearing, and it is an existing business. Mr. Laflamme, I know that you did a site visit, you have anything for us?
Yes, we, so it's a, it's an application to change tenancy in, in the site viewer plan, or a site plan review. And I had stopped by the, the site earlier today at a meeting with Ray, and the diagram that was provided is a good representation of how the operation will flow. Some of the recommendations from the CAC we looked at as well, and that is some of the height limitations of 20 feet for storage. Nothing there is even close to that now, and the applicant understands that the limit is, is 20, and it wouldn't raise above that. That we looked at the registered vehicle statement that was in there, that there should be no more than two, and that certainly is not the case. There's no unregistered vehicles on the property now, there won't be. Large truck traffic associated with the property is encouraged to use technology drive, and that's currently being observed as well by employees and such. So just, the, the tenancy piece is simply, there's a DBA or an LLC that's within that building, same address, but it's a separate room, just happens to be the same owner, you know, of that, of both LLCs. So everything is consistent with the plan and the recommendations of the CAC, and I would recommend we approve the application.
Okay, so basically recommending that we have a resolution for approval at the next meeting. I think one item we got to talk about is where we stand with the filing with the county.
Yes, I mean, the, you're talking about the deed?
Yeah.
With the property line? That'll be filed next week. We waited for, we had to get the survey and get it all together, but we're all set and ready to go.
And I know that, Mr. Laflamme, as you mentioned, you know, we want to review the conditions for the property across the street. We just approved any of the conditions that are applicable to this property, you know, such as the unregistered vehicles, height restrictions. I think we already got a couple that were identified, as you just mentioned. I think that's pretty much all we need, you know, utilizing technology, technology drive as the preferred enter and exit. Obviously, we can't control that. I did notice when I went down there today, there is a sign, signage on Anthony Street restricting truck traffic, or at least suggesting that the utilize, uh, technology drive is already down there, which is nice.
And, and just so you know, we've written into our company policy and training that Anthony, that part of Anthony is only to be used, and we have a job on that street.
Yeah.
Other than that, the trucks go straight.
It's a tough street. I was, I went down there today with parking on both sides, and somebody was parked quite a ways from it. It was like really only one lane to get through there today. So, I'm not sure if anybody has any other questions for the applicant.
I think it's a very good thing I'd gone down there a couple of weeks, just wanted to make sure. There's no issue with the aquifer on this side of the street, right?
Well, it's the same zone, which is why we're looking at the, but they don't have hazardous wastes or things like.
Right, I mean, that part I gotta understand, but I, but it is still in the same zone? I, I thought it was actually, I thought that side of the street was not.
I mean, I can double-check for you. I think it's the same zone. We could certainly reach out to the watershed board and have them double-check this one too.
Yeah, I guess we could reach out, you know, similarly. Like we did with the other business.
I mean, it's clear to me that there's no, this is all, this is not building materials, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we're down there today, you were, you were down, so you know, tires, you have the metal recyclable, there's a Kelman dumpster there. To load anything, do you have a fork truck or anything on site? Is it kept inside?
It's inside.
Inside, so, you know, that's good. You don't have to worry about any leakage onto the, to the ground outside. It's kept inside the building with cement floor. You know, obviously, it's, yeah, it seems like it's a pretty good use of the site. Obviously, the road, which isn't part of our, our responsibility here, but it, you know, it's tough, especially getting at least as far down as the Schenectady Wastewater Treatment Plant, real, real tough, and it's a little bit better pass there, but it's got to be, it's got to be tough. Now, you were talking about reaching out to other property owners to see if they could somehow, but it's not a town road, right, Laura? So, it's something you have to work on on your own, it looks like with the other owners of the other businesses, possibly the city of Schenectady, you know?
Yeah, we have a meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna meet up next week.
Yeah.
I believe Monday. What is today, Monday?
It's Monday.
It might be Thursday this week. I'll have to check. They're all running together these days.
So I think we're, we're good to move forward then with the resolution, and then if, if there's a problem with the deed, I guess we condition it to such to make sure that that gets taken care of, Laura? Is that how we would handle it?
Yeah, we could do that. Do, so we want to include the hazardous, no hazardous materials to be stored on site?
Yeah.
We want to include the piles in there?
Yep.
Yeah.
You can go right down the list from, yeah.
I mean, yeah, okay, so we want to include the unregistered vehicles and technology drive, and we'll just get confirmation from Jason Pelton on the watershed board.
Yep. And we'll try to see if you can get the copy of the draft resolution to Mr. Gagnon ahead of time. Make sure there's no surprises there, but I don't see, I don't see any issues.
No, he has gotten back to us pretty quickly, as long as we get him all the information that he needs.
There's no objections to the CAC regulations.
That's what I was asking, we're good with all of them? So the CAC only said no hazardous materials and no piles, that was their two concerns.
Yeah.
Didn't they have the 20-foot, or was that you guys?
That was 20, that was them too.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And Anthony Street? Or no, that was you guys?
That was us.
For us to try.
Oh, that was us.
To avoid the other part of Anthony Street.
That's us.
All right.
The other, the other thing that they recommended was a buffer to the stream that's there. The properties, the whole line, line lot adjustment, you know, was to address a building that encroaches on the property line or over. But just the containment, you know, process that's being used, I don't see spillage of any kind, there's no liquids as it is, but everything's within containers, and, and they're offset from that stream by probably 10, 15 feet. So I just don't, it's not laid out in a way that I think it would be an issue with the, with contaminating that waterway that's back there.
Okay, that's why a site visit is really great. I appreciate you guys doing that.
Yeah, is that something where we, was it 50-foot, right?
Well.
On the stream or?
It is if you're doing new development. I think these guys are grandfathered in, but one of the CAC people noticed the stream was close to the building, and just wanted to make sure that, how the outside was storing materials, it wasn't going to get into the stream. I think you said that there's vegetation too, that's there between there and the stream?
Yeah, like in the back lot, we have, there's a fence, and then there's, there's whatever, weeds, grass, there's vegetation between the stream and that fence, and then the yard is, is in, is on the other side of the fence.
So there's like the stream, then vegetation, then a fence, then your yard? Yeah, so that's.
Sounds good, sounds reasonable.
Is there, one question I did have, is, was there ever an attention, or do you think there'll be a need to put a fence around that facility at some point? Or do you?
I'd rather not, just, just the way where you've sold, just, just the way that the traffic goes. We're completely cambered. You know, the only reason that we would need to would be if, for security reasons. But we store nothing of value, as you saw, always, there's nothing. So if anyone breaks into the yard, the only thing of value in my yard is the trucks, and they're cambered, they're insured, there's, they're, they're secured. So if, if someone drives off with one of those big camouflage trucks with a bulldog on it, right, I mean, and I have cameras, I'm not, and I'm fully insured, so I'm not, I'm not concerned. But if anyone, if, if there were concerns for us to do that, I would absolutely, you know, cooperate with in, in that manner. It, it, you know, it makes it easier for us because the trucks can go in and out and not have to, not have the barrier.
Just thought I'd ask, yeah.
Okay. You have any questions or comments or concerns, anybody? No? All right, so we'll have the resolution.
Sorry, do we have a map with the, with the aquifer protection zone?
Yeah, I mean, I can actually pull it up on my phone, you want me to check really fast?
I mean, I, I didn't, because I remember Kubler's property, because this came up, they are not, right? Remember, so Kubler's adjacent to this property going up into Aquarack Road, right?
Yeah, but Kubler is across 360 Anthony Street too. It's actually across the Mohawkuts and. It's actually across the mahawk cuts and bike height trail.
Yeah. So I, I just, I had a general idea of it, and I actually thought that this was outside of it, but.
Sorry, continue talking.
No, it's okay. I'm sorry, putting the pressure, I'm sorry, I should have, I didn't have a chance to actually look at it before I came, and I thought I was going to ask you before the meeting started, but I didn't get a chance.
Yeah, I mean, it's live, if you, if you guys ever go to the Schenectady Internet Mapping System, the aquifer zones are on there, and you can zoom right into the parcel.
Okay, but your point is, we validate, validate the lines, and if there is a concern, we'll make sure we address the business with the, is it the watershed board? Is that what it is? And we can, you know, take care of that and still move forward, and if something comes up, we'll let you know.
Sure.
All right? Okay. All right, everyone put you on the spot now. We'll just make sure there's no issues there.
I'm like, oh, there.
All right, so we're all set, she'll work on that, we'll have a resolution, tentative resolution for next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, all right, anything else on that? No, where the applicant leaves?
No.
All right. All right, so we'll just move in the reports section of our meeting agenda. So Laura, we're going to put you on the spot again, I know you're trying to.
Okay, no, I haven't, actually. So Jenkins, like, the very tiny portion on the left is in the same zone as Jackson, but the majority of it is in a different zone. Do you want to see?
It's okay, I could look at it later.
Okay. It's mostly not in the same zone.
What you're telling me sounds familiar, I just didn't have a chance to check myself.
Okay, you were right, you were totally.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, um, so, we did a presentation to the town board about the Odehak rezone, and I think what we had said, and what we'd sort of agreed on, was our next steps, where we were going to research the code, maybe get a committee together to make sure the code is right, and probably make changes to the code, and we'll call another public hearing when we make changes to the code, then get the code changes and the rezone wrapped up and sent to the town board. I mean, it's probably going to take a while. But in the meantime, we did reach out to Odehak, they were amenable to a walkthrough, so I'm just going to reach out to you guys for dates, just like Chris was able to double check on some stuff today with a site walkthrough. I think that's a really good next step. I've also reached out to some engineering companies to see what, if they can flesh out codes. They've all said they can, it's just sort of figuring out how they're going to quote that to me, but the capability of fleshing out some ideas there is definitely doable, and we could present some of those ideas and get public input. I think that having a commission to look at it and getting a lot of public input is a great idea. Yeah, I thought we had, I thought we had a lot of good comments tonight, so we'll work on those. Next step is scheduling through a walkthrough, and then maybe finalizing how much it would cost to flesh some things out, and then maybe David and Mr. Scrubbitennis, we could call together some kind of a committee to start working on things on a committee level.
Yep, that sounds good, and we'll get a copy of the, what was submitted tonight to the board, of course, right, in our packet for next time, right? That would be good. As far as the walkthrough, Laura, is there any restrictions on time?
No, but they actually said, like, do we want to go in the buildings? Do we want to just stay out? Like, how thorough do we want the walkthrough to be? I mean.
Why they asked that? Do we have a, no, nothing certain anyhow, but is there, is it the whole acreage, or some of the buildings are actually going to remain in place, where they don't need to be walked through because they're going to remain?
Well, I think they were just asking it so that they can coordinate the right people for us. I mean, they were very nice to work with. They just wanted to make sure that they would show us what we needed to see. I mean, I was like, I don't really think we need to see the interior of the buildings, but maybe that would be helpful.
Might be helpful, I think somebody mentioned there were some tunnels or something like that, I think that might be of, of interest, you know?
Maybe we could just say the full enchilada, and then see how many people we could get to come.
Yeah.
Well, I suspect that Dave might be able to speak a little bit to the potential of, just think about demolition issues, and, you know, Dave has that ability and that skillset, so that might be helpful looking to build.
Yeah. So I think, Laura, if you just, you know, throw out some dates or times somehow, and maybe that's how we get started, and then we'll get some feedback.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I think it'd be good to.
Is that turned on? I can't hear you there.
I think it'd be good to go through some of the buildings and at least see a couple of the tunnels. And I don't know how much information they're willing to give us. I know in the past, previous planner had made efforts to get information about, gee, are the buildings really full of asbestos, as many of us believe, or not, and could not get an answer. I made some inquiries through unofficial channels and got nowhere fast on most of it, but I got some feedback. But there's quite a lot there, and I know, it's been a lot of years since I've been in the buildings, I know there were some issues, and that's why they weren't using some of the buildings.
Okay. Yeah, they just wanted to know what the scope was, that the planning board wanted to see, and then they'll schedule with us, so we can just ask for all those things.
What timeframe are they looking at? Like this month, or next month, or?
Um, they seem very flexible. I would think that this month would be okay.
I think the sooner we get some better information, the better.
The sooner, the better.
Yeah, it sounds like it would be, I'm trying to see if I'm wrong, but probably close, maybe later in the day would probably be best for everybody.
Yeah.
So if you can, I know that they have to be there on site, I'm not sure how long they work till, but you know, if you, like, 3:00, 4:00, 4:00, this might be best opportunity, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, if I schedule it, maybe, you know, two weeks out, and later in the day, that would give people enough time to see if it could work for them and their work schedules. Yeah, okay, I'll try that.
Worth to try.
Chairman's got a busy schedule.
Yeah. Yeah, I got to check my calendar. All right, anything else on that right now? We got some good comments tonight, appreciate it, and, you know, we'll all get copies of those, and, you know, we'll take that into consideration, so thank you. All right? Anything else on that right now? I'll keep working it forward. Again, you know, one of the things is, you know, we hear about, you know, whether they're going to sell, what something's going to happen or not, nobody has a crystal ball, but I think we're doing the right thing to keep moving it forward, keep talking about it, not letting it drop off the plate, and being in a position where we're not trying to negotiate with developers when they come in with a plan, have something, a vision of where we want to be, so we get the developers to come in, you know, working with our vision, not trying to convince them, so, so I think we're doing the right thing.
I have one question. Have there been any inquiries to the town from potential developers for?
No, not to, not to the planning department, no.
And no comments in general from developers either?
I have not heard from any private developers about Odehak.
Perhaps after my comments, maybe somebody would say, yeah, she's right, or, no, she's got it wrong, it's not going to be that bad.
No, I haven't heard, no. I'm not sure they're paying that much attention yet. I think it's got to be really out there for them to invest their brain power. So it's not on the reports, but I did want to jump onto 1380 Van Antwerp. They weren't, did not have a full submittal for this month, although we do expect them to be on for next month. According to the engineer, they do have a drainage study that they can bring to us for next month. The tree council did go out there and meet today. They are able to, the trees that are flagged are the edges of clearing, so those are not the trees that would be taken down, those would be the trees that would be saved on the edges of clearing, and they were able to work with the developer to save them, you know, a good portion of the trees, although most of the trees within, like, the forsythia are right in the building footprints. That has nothing to do with, I mean, it has something, I mean, if the subdivision isn't good for the neighborhood, that's a different conversation, but the tree council did go out there and figure out a way to save as many trees as possible under the current configuration, which I know you guys had asked.
Under the proposed subdivision.
Under the proposed subdivision.
Right, and was the applicant there, or was the engineer?
The engineer's there.
Okay.
So they'll probably discuss it on their tree council meeting on Thursday, and then make some kind of recommendations to you guys on that configuration.
Any insight from the developer as far as modifying the plan based on the suggestions? Are they still going forward with the three lot?
My understanding is they're not willing to modify, you know, voluntarily. I still think that we have the right to ask for things, but, no, they don't want to take, they don't want to take it down to two lots. And they also don't feel that the carriage house is movable. So that's the update on 1380 Van Antwerp. Lorraine's still sitting in the audience. The Rosendale, the county state projects, they will all come to a public hearing, and hopefully that will be held at the town hall. We've asked for them to all be held at the town hall. Both those projects are very preliminary. We've had various levels of coordination with the county, but they have seemed to show more interest lately in allowing us to have all the information that they have and attend to their meetings, so anytime they hold a meeting, we're trying to be there. And when neither of those projects get the public hearing, we're asking for those public hearings to be at the town hall, so that everybody can come and look at the alternatives.
And it'd be great, Laura, if you get any notices, you know, on the town webpage, those notifications.
Get them up quickly as possible.
If anybody is out there, please subscribe to the town webpage. When they put something up like that, you get automatic notifications, a great thing, so.
And then, last but not least, the G E common area improvements, it's a, G E doesn't have any specific landscaping in their site plan approvals or anything that would really tie full site plan review to them changing up their landscaping, but it is a decent amount of work that's being done at G E, so I wanted to make you guys aware. They're, you know, they're, they're sort of regrading their sidewalks so that they're A D A accessible. They're saving as many trees as they can, and they're replanting more trees than they take down. They picked a lot of, they worked with Jeff and I to pick a lot of native species, which is great, and they're trying to just encourage more use of their green areas by their employees outside, so they're installing some shade structures and things for people to have outdoor workspace in. They aren't really, I guess they already have food trucks there, I've never been to G E when they had their food trucks out, but apparently they already have food trucks, so they're just moving them around. So they're not really changing anything significant about G E, but there is going to be a fair amount of work there, so I wanted to make you guys aware. And then if you had any questions or concerns, we can bring it to them, because it does require a building permit.
No, thanks for including that, and it looks pretty good, you know?
I think it looks fantastic.
Yeah. No comment, right? Mr. Khan?
Just one thing, it came up in the public hearing about the Albany Med Building, the sidewalk cuts, so we can probably check, get someone to check that out, right?
Thanks. Yeah. Anything else?
None.
Scrubbitennis? Laflamme?
Any updates on the Rivers Ledge?
Oh, yes. They have applied to the town for a clearing permit, because they do need to have the trees down for, before March 31st. So they will be starting, they're clearing, they're not breaking any ground until probably much later in the season, but they're starting to mobilize, and they expect their crews to be on site, like, later in the year, so you won't see too much of the clearing, because it's mostly on the junkyard side. Potentially, they'll be clearing a little bit along the canal core land, so that we can start planning that park. They have put a couple deposits down as well on their parkland fees and things, so that they were able to move forward with some of the stuff, so, yeah, they're moving forward.
Good, right. What's driving the March 31st deadline?
There's an endangered species of bat that you can't, you really can't take trees down between March 30, between April 1st and November 1st, so they want to get out to the site before November 1st. They've got some buildings going up in Green Island, and when they finish up those buildings, they want to move their crews over to Niskiuna.
And so like, March 31st is a hard deadline?
Yes.
Pretty hard.
Although the next day is forbidden, it's okay on 31st.
Yeah, so if anybody was traumatized by the intersection of 146 and 146A, I am sure they cleared that because of the March 31st deadline.
Yeah, it's, it's a reality. I have a project with O G S, and there were a couple trees on the edge of that property for where that project was.
Right.
And they had to have them down, or they would have to wait until the spring, so.
It's, um.
It's a migratory.
So what it is, is basically the bats are in their caves in the winter, so you can clear the trees, and you're not endangering their lives.
Right.
But there's a certain point where they start coming out of their caves, and there's, I think there's actually some flexibility, because the northern long-eared bats are in more than just New York, but New York has a slightly tighter window than, I think some places allow it to go to April 14th, but New York says March 31st. I mean, you're only talking about two weeks, and that's just when they feel that you have a safe cushion, that the bats aren't coming out of their caves to start actually nesting in the trees.
The first is, does already have a cushion?
It does have a cushion, so New York has a stronger cushion than some of the other states, but that's just to protect the bats.
Yeah, thanks, Laura.
Yeah, so, so you'll see a little activity on that, then maybe a little rest, and then they should be gearing up late summer, early fall.
Anything else, Ms. Laflamme? Anybody else? Yeah, I have nothing further. Motion to adjourn. Okay, Mr. Khan, and by Mr. Scrubbitennis, and thank you all for coming tonight, appreciate your input. Thanks.